While we're talking.
Will, you're good to go.
Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting April 10th, 2017. I'd like to begin by welcoming our newest member, Mike Walsh. Congratulations on your victory.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to turn it over to Town Administrator for the reorganization.
Yes, thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. Thank you for your year as chairman. And now, I would ask for a motion for the election of a new chairman for the next year.
I would like to gladly or happily nominate Will Kincaid as a nine-year member of the Milford School Committee and a two-year member of the Board of Selectmen. I think he's well-prepared to move forward, move this board forward, move this new board forward. And it's my pleasure, Will, to nominate you.
Thank you.
And I would second that.
All in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. It's yours.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I have a short seventeen-page statement I'd like to read. No, I promise I won't keep you that long. But I would like to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues for electing me chairman. I also want to thank you, Bill, for serving as chair for the past year and congratulate you on your reelection. It's great to have you back and I look forward to continuing to serve with you. I also am very excited to welcome you, Mike, and congratulate you on your election.
Thank you.
This is the second time I've had the privilege of welcoming you as a newly-elected board member. Mike and I worked very well together on the school committee and I look forward to repeating those successes together as selectmen.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
The three of us have chosen Milford to be our home and to raise our children and grandchildren here, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you both for serving and working to make our town a better place. This year's chair, I'm looking forward to working very closely with Rick Valani, our town administrator, Christopher Moran, chairman of the Finance Committee, department heads and staff to ensure that this board's priorities are achieved. As chairman, my priorities are going to be centered around quality of life issues. In addition to working with departments that we are responsible for, I also want to be available to make sure that the School Department, the Highway Department, and the Parks Department have the support they need to make sure that our roads continue to be improved, our parks and open space are maintained and beautified, and our schools are strengthened. Communication with Town Hall and across departments will be another priority. Going forward, I want to invite the independent boards to our meetings and have an open dialogue to see where we can help each other to continue to improve and make Milford better. We will continue to work with our private landowners like Archel Rubber to assist them and partner when we can to market and support projects that will bring jobs, commerce, and more taxpayers to Milford. We have a dual tax rate where businesses pay a higher tax rate, but we're also a very business-friendly town who will continue to support tax incremental financing when a project is worth such an investment. I also want to work with residential landlords and be in contact with them when there are multiple complaints of noise, blight, or police action. Landlords cannot make changes if they are not aware of the issues that are causing problems in our neighborhoods. Problems are most prevalent when properties are owned by absentee landlords. Over the last two years, we've been able to fill vacancies and make appointments to boards and commissions with qualified people that have not had the option of serving in the past. I think we need to continue this practice and encourage more people that want to get involved to do so. They need to know that we welcome their involvement. To Mike and Bill, I will be accessible to each of you, and I hope that you will be accessible to me when I seek your advice and counsel. Thanks again for the opportunity to serve as your chairman. I'm looking forward to the next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And now, onto regular business. First agenda item is signing of the warrant.
I'll move that we approve the warrant.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor as well. It's unanimous. Can we also get a motion for the approval of the March 27 minutes?
I'll move to approve those minutes.
I have to abstain, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't here.
Okay. Mike, you'll abstain, and I'll second that. Two in favor, one abstention. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak that is not on the agenda? Not seeing anyone. We can start our public hearings and scheduled appointments. And the first one is Mango Tree looking for a wine and malt common vitular. Mr. Knofrey, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, let me offer my congratulations to you as being chairman and also to Mike being elected as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Just reflecting, I'm amazed as I try to recall all the selectmen that previously served on the school committee. I think that you can go back and there aren't too many selectmen that haven't, you know, served as a school committee member. So, I think it's good training and I look forward to you guys doing a good job for the town of Milford.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Mike Knofrey here representing Mango Tree Inc. I have with me Pavani Petnoy and Tom Kaman, who Pavani is the president, treasurer, and director of the Mango Thai Corporation. Do you want to go through any reports before that, or do you want me to?
If you want to make your presentation, and then I'll just do that real quick and we'll get right to it.
All right. I didn't mean to.
No, this is perfect.
All right. They've been operating the Mango Tree Restaurant, which is located at 206 East Main Street, Milford, for the past two years. It's a small restaurant seating up to thirty-four diners. They've put significant money into that operation to make it customer-friendly. And Tom had previous experience with the Mango Thai Restaurant. That was the restaurant that was located at the intersection of Medway Road and East Main Street. In fact, they were there for thirteen years, and it had three times the seating capacity, so it was a much larger restaurant. So, they, I think when we transferred their license to the Lucky Nine Billiards about three years ago, I made the representation that Tom was looking around with his sister for another location. Well, it's taken some three years to find that location, but they're very happy there. And they've made application for the existing wine and malt license that is available. What they're finding out is there are some customers that come in and they ask for a bottle of beer or a glass of wine, and they're unable to serve them, and that somewhat affects their business. They operate seven days a week from 11:30 to 9:30 p.m. I think, hopefully, talking to them, they haven't had any violations that I'm aware of as far as board of health or inspections or anything of that nature, and that continues with their, Tom's involvement with the operation at the previous location and at the Big Y Plaza. So, we're here to answer any questions that you have. Welcome.
Sure. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just want to go over the department head review form. The building commissioner, IB zone allowable use, building and restrooms are acceptable. The town planner says, okay, no change of actual use. The tax collector does have it reported that there's FY 2017 outstanding personal property taxes.
I believe those were paid.
Yeah. I was gonna say it was ninety-four dollars.
They did take care of those.
Okay, that's great. And all of the other departments report there's no issues. So, I can turn it over to the board members. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. You're right, Michael, in your presentation, you spoke of the reports that we received from the Police Department and whatnot. I've not seen any incidents or concerns that I have. It seems the appropriate place to have a beer and wine license. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions at all. Mr. Knofrey's addressed anything that I have, and you just did in terms of that question.
Okay, great. Mike?
I would have to agree with what Bill said. This document right here says it all to us that, you know, they run a very clean, you know, very organized business, so I would be the same.
Thank you. I'm gonna read the notice of public hearing just prior to taking a vote. The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it has received an application for a common vitular wine and malt license from Mango Tree Inc. at 206 East Main Street. The proposed manager is Pavanoi, Pavane?
Pavani.
Pavani Petnoy. The premises has one floor consisting of a twelve-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot room with one entrance and two exits and proposed seating capacity of thirty-four. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 138 as amended, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on said application on Monday, April 10, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass. With that being said, I also don't have any other questions. I was a patron of your former Mango Tree, and it was a really fun place and the food was delicious. So, I look forward to coming by again. I don't know if there's a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant Mango Tree Inc. a wine and malt common vitular license.
And I would second that.
Also vote in favor, so that's unanimous. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knofrey.
Thank you.
Nice job. Good luck.
Well, I guess it was impossible to advance that.
Do you want to do the baseball while Mr. Knofrey's here?
If you'd like.
Why not?
Sure. You mind doing that?
We were gonna do it whether you were here or not. We weren't gonna make you stay.
I just, I wanted to.
Do an intro?
Get a little publicity about it.
Let's read that. So, we're going down to, going down the agenda to the permit to obstruct application from the Milford Baseball Association. The contact person is Michael Knofrey. And it is for opening day parade going from Me and Hyundai dealership down Hamilton Street, left on Ravenna, right onto Cedar Street to Rosenfeld Park. It's Saturday, April 22nd, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. and another great event that we look forward to every year.
Okay. In fact, for sixty-five years, we've been doing this in Milford with Milford Baseball. So, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of all those people that are watching and personally invite the board, as you've done in the past, attended our opening day ceremonies. We're probably one of the few sport organizations that conducts such an event. And I was just thinking that, and again, where I talked to the police chief and he suggested maybe going down Hamilton Street, working with Mike Walsh through Kevin Mean, getting permission. At the time, we got permission, there was no cars on the lot, but there's plenty of room there for the, for the boys and girls to assemble, you know, before the parade. And the baseball numbers are down significantly, so just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. And also just thinking of the first four teams. The first four teams were Daverns, the VFW, the Eagles, and Sabatennellis. And the four coaches, when you think about it, Johnny Caligoni, Chick Sales, Pep Mark Hohn, and Charlie Espinette. And we lost Charlie Espinette about a month ago, probably one of the legends of sports in the town of Milford. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to give him a little plug. I haven't seen anything publicity-wise, Coach's Hall of Fame, wonderful person. I taught with him years ago, and he's helped so many, so many kids in the Milford-Hopedale area. In fact, back then, there were Hopedale boys that were playing in Milford to support that four-team league. So, again, I invite you and other people to watch the parade. It's at nine o'clock in the morning. We'll be through half an hour, forty-five minutes, and we look forward to seeing you guys there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, why don't we go ahead and?
Perfect. Make a motion?
Yeah. It's odd that a parade for youth is called the permit to obstruct, but that is the way the process works. It's certainly not an obstruction, but a great tradition in Milford. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the permit to obstruct for Milford Baseball Association for their parade on, let's see, April 22nd, starting at 9:00 a.m.
I would second that.
Also vote in favor, so that's unanimous.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Next is park terrace discontinuance, Rick?
Yeah. Basically, as the board knows, Milford Downtown LLC, owner of the property, the former Milford National Bank, 256 Main Street, they filed an application to discontinue as a public way. It's approximately forty-three feet plus or minus of park terrace, and basically it will resolve a potential title issue. As you remember, the board voted on February 27th to include this article in the Maytown Meeting Warrant as requested. The board now is just, basically, this is a public hearing on this application, and that's all the board would need to do. If there is no comment, then close the hearing, and it will be on the warrant, and then the board can take up the article now, or they can wait, obviously, till the discussion of the warrant, so.
And then with this petition, this is a memo to the Board of Selectmen from our town planner, Larry Duncan, the planning board. Their regularly-scheduled meeting, 3/21/17, unanimously recommended the following: Discontinue a portion of park terrace, forty-three square feet, has a public way. The planning board supports the request and recommends inserting the appropriate article in the next town meeting warrant. Is there any action to be taken?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend favorably on this and give some of the history. I think throughout the years, the building on that property, whether it's by the age of the titles or whatnot, actually had inches protruding into what was a public way. To accommodate that and to adjust for that, it's, it's my belief, and I know the board voted favorably on it unanimously at the last meeting, to go forward with this. So, I think, depending, I don't know if anybody's here as a matter of public to speak on it, but I would recommend going forward with this.
I would second that.
Okay. We'll make that unanimous, Rick.
Thank you.
So, hearing, you gotta have somebody here that wanted to speak on it.
Okay. You'd think I would've known that.
No, it's all right. It happens to be all the time.
The next agenda item is Attorney Joe Antonellis representing Sage Cannabis Incorporated. He's joined by Mike Dundas.
Good evening, gentlemen. Congratulations to all of you for multiple different things. Nice to see you all here tonight. And I thought Mr. Knofrey did a nice job talking about the league parade. I played for Eagles. I marched in that parade three times, and it's a great, it's always a lot of fun and obviously great memories. When I spoke with Mr. Valani, I told him that it was an annual letter of no opposition, of support, that we were here for. I was actually mistaken. My client, and Michael's here with me tonight, my client has been the recent recipient of another license to operate a dispensary, a medical marijuana dispensary, in the town of Somerville. And as a result of their winning that particular bid and that process, that process, Department of Public Health requires an additional letter of no opposition from this community. Relative to our situation here in Milford, you will recall that when this facility was permitted, it was the very first medical marijuana grow facility that received a full local permitting in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Others have since followed, and my client's company obviously went through a very rigorous Department of Public Health review period. And as I said, they are now open, they are producing medical marijuana in the facility here in Milford. They employ approximately eighty people, and we're pleased to tell you that forty-five of the individuals that are on our payroll in the Milford office are Milford residents. This was a commitment that Michael made. We talked about that when we first came in, that Milford residents would be given a priority. We've been able to follow through with that. So, Michael's proud, and I'm proud for him of what they've done. So, we're here simply tonight to ask that you would send a letter to the Department of Public Health, letting them know that you continue to support our operation in Milford, which will supply those facilities outside of this town.
Great. Thank you. I'll go to the board members with any questions or concerns.
You know, I have no questions or comments. When the facility first applied for permits, and we were discussing the potential benefits of medical marijuana to individuals with, you know, either glaucoma or various ailments, this board had supported with a letter of non-opposition. And I would recommend that we generate that, that letter once again, make a motion that we create that letter once again in the same language it was created the first time and update it with our, with our signature. That would be my motion.
I will second that.
Thank you, Mike. I'll also vote in favor of that, make that unanimous, and just tell, let you know, Michael, that I went up there some time ago. You were good enough and gracious enough to give me a tour. It's quite the establishment. It's amazing, the security and everything that you guys have built up there, so. And thank you for keeping your promise and getting some Milford people in there, so. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Again, congratulations to all of you again. Nice to see you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Milford TV presenting their annual report.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Stark, is you're the president?
Yes, I am the president, and as you know, Rob is our executive director, the fellow who really knows what's going on. Josh is our treasurer, and Jeremy is the corporate clerk. We have two other board members who regret that they couldn't be here this evening.
Well, I'm not sure how we want to, or if you have a way that you want to present it, or some things maybe that just key points you'd want to talk about and let the public know?
Well, we appear here annually, just for the benefit of the public members who may not know. Milford TV is the operating name of the corporation that the town formed, of which we are officers. And we're responsible to the town under an agreement with the town through the, through the selectmen to provide what are called PEG service, public access, educational, and government coverage. Essentially, Milford TV. We are, we appear annually before you to report on status of things. You have in front of you the report that Rob has prepared, giving an update of the programming and other developments with Milford TV. Essentially, though, we're here to respond to any kinds of questions, concerns, inquiries that you may have.
That's great. Well, I can certainly turn it over to the board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take the opportunity to tell you what fantastic work you're doing. And I, you're right. And as a board, keeping, giving the guidance and, you know, keeping track of the finances, working through audits and different things that are important for an ongoing transparent organization. You know, having gone through this last election, you gave the candidates and the community the opportunity in various forums by televising that information so that people could make informed decisions. And for that, the community is grateful, and I, myself, am grateful for that opportunity. But I want to just give you the opportunity to highlight the upgrades and the things that have happened since the last year, because I think that's important. You continue to invest in your people and the equipment so that we can have state-of-the-art television and local access, so I wonder if you could go through that.
Sure. If I could touch on that?
Yes, yes. Rob is the fellow to answer that question.
Sure. So, I like singing our praises when we can, and not shy to say that I think we're doing a great job. And if you just look at the surrounding communities, there's a lot of PEG access stations that are still struggling to transition from VHS tapes. We're completely digital now. We upgraded our server. We had an original video server that we're using for the past three years. Last year, we made the effort to spend the money to update to the Katz's server. Doesn't mean much, you know, to most people, but to us, what that enables us to do is when Comcast and Verizon is ready to give us an HD signal, we can, we're, boom, just flip a switch and we're good to go. And we've heard rumors that that may happen very soon, so we'll be ready. But in terms of comparing us to other stations, just in the immediate area, you won't find anyone with the level of equipment, expertise that we have. And that all goes back to the beginning of how this whole organization was set up. Again, I have to give thanks to the board that was here. Yourself, Dino, Brian, set it up beautifully and gave us the opportunity to have the money come in, because money is the most important thing. And if the contract wasn't set up properly, we wouldn't be here today, so. And then, you know, you had the smarts to get Andy on board, and then Josh, and, and then we got Jeremy, and we've had Steve on board, and we had Gary, and Phyllis, and Ray. And Ray, and Ray Oger now. And the key point in all of this is everyone's involved. Milford is a special place where people actually get involved in the community. And if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. And we also have employees that buy in and are totally dedicated, so Liz Harkins, Daniel Harlow, work in every meeting here tonight. We have our new employee, Mike Sperling. We have Tim Coet. And all these people are just dedicated to what they do, and it's, it's kind of hard to find that at this level. So, I think we're doing a lot of special things. In terms of equipment, so I just talked about the Katz's. If you look at this third page, we have some pictures here. There's a small picture of a very large piece of equipment, the camera jib, also called a camera crane. That was a significant budget purchase. But that enables us to get really cinematic views, so we, this is a picture that we took outside of the Santa Parade. We were also able to stream that live, so we've done a lot of productions live streaming. We've had multiple playoff games, and we only started doing that last spring. So, we've done all the softball games last spring, we're livestreamed. We did the volleyball run this, this past fall. We've done all the football games, live streaming, basketball games, and we're still really starting to ramp up sporting events, and we're looking to cover a lot of the events as live events. And, you know, we're still growing. We're four years in, but again, in the immediate area, there's established PEG access studios that have been around for ten, fifteen years that can't even come close to what we're doing today. Now, that being said, we still have a lot of growing to do. And at this point right now, we just recently signed the contract to knock down the walls next door in our existing studio, and we're building Studio B because we have had the demand for the use of our studio. Every weeknight, there's, there's at least one or two shows taping in studio. We use it occasionally on the weekends, so having that second studio will help free up the larger existing studio. And, you know, again, the response from the community is, is awesome, because if we, you know, I worked in Marlboro, I think I've said this before, but much larger population and a lot more coming, more money coming in, but very, not, not as many members actively getting involved. So, it was awesome to come to Milford and see people getting involved right away.
What's the number of active members now that have been trained and participating to some extent?
So, right now, we have two-hundred-and-five official members and seventy-three volunteers. Now, if you break that down, and we do break it down.
No need to here, but I just wanted to give people a sense at home of the number of people.
So, not all of them may be active, but the big number here is the volunteers. I really like the volunteers. That includes all of our school interns, the, some of the different corporations that we partner with in town, the nonprofits. We even do work with, we have alternatives from Whitensville. They come in once a week with their special needs group, and they actually are making a television program. That's really cool. We work at Milford Youth Center. We're actually at their facility today, planning a telethon, because they want to raise money to create a music room in the Milford Youth Center, and their, as you know, their, some of their funding was cut. So, we're actually planning that in conjunction with Ray Oger. So, we have, there's so many ways to connect with people in Milford because of all the different groups that help out. So, it's kind of easy to find people to, to help out.
On that note, I'd like to add to folks who may be watching, who may be interested in, in what's going on down at the studio, or may have family or children or grandchildren who might be interested, the door is wide open. We would love to have folks come down, explore, perhaps get involved. Nothing to be afraid of and lots to learn. So, for anyone watching or anyone who has family members who might be interested, come on down. The door is open, and we'd love to see you.
And with the new studio opening up, we're hoping to have a big grand, re-grand opening for the new studio. And we had surprisingly good success with the first grand opening, but if you looked at the studio on the grand opening, you look at it now, it's a completely different place. We've added technology all over the place. But still, there's still things we need to build out, and we have some more capital money coming. We need to build out our internal network a bit more to have some more, get off of hard drives completely. You know, we, we did the work to get off of DVDs and tapes. We still use DVDs, physical archive some of these meetings, and, but for the majority of, of our productions, they're all digital. We have an online archive on YouTube, so anything that our staff produced, the meetings that we cover in town, I suggest everyone visit, anyone in Milford who's interested in Milford politics, sports, news, go to our YouTube channel, because now we have four years of archived footage. That's, and it's, it's not going anywhere. I don't think YouTube's going anywhere anytime soon. So, it's, it's a, it's a running archive, and anytime you want to look at a past selectman meeting or a finance meeting or a sporting event from a couple of years ago, you can, and what's nice about that now, we have a full schedule on Channel 8. Over the past four years, we've archived enough programming that I can fill the entire schedule from, you know, 5:30 a.m. all the way to 4:30 a.m., you know, any night of the week. So, it's, it's exciting to have that much going on in town.
If I could, a couple of things to add. In terms of another grand opening, once the expansion is done, where, so folks are aware, we're looking at perhaps two, three months down the line before we're at that stage. And the other thing I thought to mention is, we've talked about sports and government and so forth. Particular favor of mine that has been mentioned, folks out there may not know, Milford has a symphony orchestra, and Milford TV, Rob and the crew cover and, and record the Milford Symphony Orchestra. And if you think that might be some sort of a small-town version, tune in, check it And if you think that might be some sort of a small-town version, tune in, check it out, go on YouTube and listen to it. This is first-quality classical music with something between, I think, fifty and a hundred musicians, depending on the particular time involved, and it happens right up here in Town Hall. So there's, it's not just sports and school and town meetings. There are cultural events as well that, that we cover.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, great. Mike?
I would just like to comment to Rob, you know, you talked about the dedication of your employees. They're also very accommodating. And, you know, have been, you know, a member of the Milford School Committee for eight years, the Youth Commission for twelve. The great coverage that you, you know, you give us at the school committee meetings. And as you know, there are nights, sometimes we get off a little bit late, because something's come up, or, or, you know, we go into an executive session, and we ask you to leave the room before you've got everything all picked up. It's never a big deal. It's always, "Don't worry about it, guys. I'll, I'll take care of it later on." And the same thing, you know, over at the Youth Center, many, many times. As you mentioned earlier, you're always there to help us, you know, help Jen with anything that, you know, we're trying to get launched or ready. The night we were downstairs here waiting for the election results to come in, I was amazed. I spoke to you about this, the young man with that camera, whatever.
Malcolm, yeah.
And he maneuvered around this room without.
Malcolm's everywhere.
Yeah, you know, without getting in anybody's way. And, and, you know, Bill was here with me. There were a lot of people here sitting on different areas, and he did a really gracious job of getting around the room and not getting in the way at, at all, as Kevin and Al were shooting the show.
And he's one of the volunteers. He's not one of the paid staff.
Thank you for the counter words, Mike.
That's what the general public needs to know, is that these, you know, these hard, dedicated people. I was amazed. You took me on a tour of the studio, you know, and, and showed me the expansion. It's just amazing to me, and I'd love that, and that was a great, a great idea. The doors are always open, because the general public, even if you had an open house, they really saw the behind-the-scenes, you know, what goes on down there. They'd be shocked, because I know I was.
Oh, thank you.
You know, I was.
You bring up Malcolm. That's a great example of what people can do if they just walk in the door and, and start up. Malcolm started helping us out when he was twelve, and now he's sixteen, and he is a master of the camera. He is, I mean, if you look at any, if you watch any of the football games, he's the guy on the sideline running around like a madman and catching all these great shots. And he, he's going to do something big one day, but it's cool that he got his start here.
I think also what I like about it is, having been to the TV station many, many times doing shows, is what you just spoke about, the young people that really didn't know what they wanted to do, but they knew they wanted to do that, and it gave them direction. You give them support, and you teach them, and you can see it. When you come in there to do a show, you can, you can feel it. You can feel the warmth of the, the people that, people like yourself that set that. So, you know, I just want to say thank you to, to Bill's credit through the campaign. You know, the, the snow and the rainy days that we couldn't get out on the sidewalk. It was, it was you guys that helped us. It was running those shows over and over again, so the general public could say, geez, I really don't know this, you know, fella. He hasn't been able to get to my door, because it keeps snowing, you know. They can see us on TV and watch us in action, so.
Thank you. And, and again, sometimes the fact that we live in Milford, it makes our jobs easier, because we have groups like the CFM that set up a debate. And all we have to do is bring our cameras and hit record. You know, Town Cryer sets up the debate, the forum at, at upper, upper Town Hall. We just set up, hit record, go live with it. So it's these, all these groups working together that really make it happen. And I'd just like to say thanks to you, because I'm not from Milford. And when I started doing the school committees, you were one of the first people to shake my hand and, and remember my name, so that, that meant a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the great work, everybody. Thank you.
I won't, I certainly won't keep you here too much longer, but Josh, you're still the treasurer, right?
Correct, yeah.
Could you just give us a little update on how your financial health is?
Absolutely, yeah. So I would say we're very healthy. One of the, I've been the treasurer since the beginning, so it's been a wonderful experience getting to kind of grow the organization. And one of the things that we wanted to do is encourage sustainability, because of all of the things we just discussed, I mean, that's incredibly rewarding, everything we're able to provide to the community. So I've always striven to take a fiscally responsible approach, so that, you know, each year, we're able to make improvements, like the ones that Rob highlighted. So we're not pinching every penny, but we're trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way. Give Rob what he needs to do a quality job while at the same time planning for the future. So we actually budget out about five, six years into the future, and we make long-range plans. So currently, we are projecting to be in a good spot for the future. And we just passed our audit with flying colors.
Congratulations.
You know, everything's looking good.
Oh, that's great.
If I could jump in and just say, these two guys right here, all-stars. I mean, when it comes to a board of directors that actually cares.
You've got a pretty impressive board, Rob. A lot of good people, and you've got this guy over here. I like charming.
Really, I got lucky. I just jumped in to this, and these guys were already here, working hard. Josh is amazing with the work he does with the numbers.
Yeah, there's a lot in here. That's why I just wanted the public to hear a little bit.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Very impressive.
It's a downside to everything.
He scares people for us, so that, so it's, it's a good, it's a good group of guys to have. So it's, yeah, I'm, I'm really lucky, yeah.
No, that's great. And before you, before you do leave, we bid you goodnight. Jeremy, do you have anything you'd like to, you'd like to add while you're here?
No, I mean, I'm kind of the representative from the high school with the group. So we just continue to send kids over like Malcolm, and a bunch of other kids like John, Destiny, Alexa. They've been doing a lot of work with you guys, Tim. A lot of kids just keep finding their niche and joining up with my classes, and then going over to Milford TV for the real professional version of what we're trying to do. And it's really amazing to be part of it.
That's terrific.
So to the folks out there, we need new blood. Come down.
Right. Unless you have any folks, anything else to say, I'll certainly, you know, bid you guys adieu and let you go home at a reasonable hour.
Yeah, I would just encourage people to check out our YouTube channel. Follow us on, on Twitter, friend us on Facebook. We do a lot of social media stuff now. But YouTube, I mean, any, anybody in Milford would find hours of entertainment information on our YouTube channel.
That's for sure.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations to all of you, and good night.
All right, thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next agenda item is the town administrator's report, Rick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. One, Chapter Ninety funding. We've been notified by Mass DOT that the Chapter Ninety Local Transportation Aid Funding for fiscal year eighteen will total $200 million statewide. Pending final passage of the bond authorization, the fiscal year Chapter Ninety apportionment for Milford is $823,131, and this is basically pretty much the same amount that we had last year. I have an update on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We had our second working group meeting on April fifth here in Room Three. Our consultant, GZA, was here with a plan update. Departments represented were the police, Lieutenant James Falvey, Fire Chief William Toohey, Town Engineer Mike Dean, Town Planner Larry Duncan, John Minini Sewer Director, David Condry from the Water Company, and myself. We are now beginning to draft the actual Hazard Mitigation Plan. We do need to hold two public hearings. We would look to possibly tentatively schedule one for the next selectman meeting on April twenty-fourth. We're hoping the final draft plan will be provided to us in October. And as the board knows, the FEMA Federal Emergency Management Agency did approve an award of almost $33,000 to be used by us to update this multi-hazard mitigation plan. So that is progressing well. Just an update again on the MS-IV permit, really kind of where we were before. But I just do want to note that on April fifth last week, Town Engineer Mike Dean and I, we attended a meeting at Bodich and Dewey in Worcester for an update on the MS-IV permit appeal. The EPA has filed a motion to consolidate the appeals, and they will be heard in the D.C. Circuit Court. Petitioner briefs would be due May eighth, EPA briefs due July twenty-fourth, reply briefs due September seventh, final briefs due September twenty-eighth. Thereafter, oral argument will be scheduled. And then I will continue to keep the board updated on this matter as it progresses. But kind of that's where we are right now. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Any questions for Rick?
I do. Related to the MS-IV permit and specifically the appeal, this is the appeal that we joined with other communities.
That is correct, yes. Yeah, and, yes.
Okay. And I, and I did read, I think it was in the Mass Municipal Association Newsletter, that Governor Baker is looking to consolidate all the MS-IV permitting and to make it the responsibility of the DEP and not the EPA, take state control of that.
That is correct.
And there, I guess, there are few, there are many communities or many states that have that arrangement.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see where this goes and where that appeal process goes. Okay, thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you.
That could potentially be very important, and certainly, while hopefully more reasonable to, to handle with local people than possibly heads, I hope.
Through the course of this process, we've talked about the potential impact to our community being anywhere from forty-five million to a hundred million dollars. It bounces around, but it certainly would be devastating to our businesses. Yeah, I'm interested to see where that appeal goes and where the governor's plan goes. And maybe it's, I don't know to what extent this will go through the legislature, but, you know, maybe, why don't, why don't we consider this? If the board's so inclined, I'd like to make a motion that, that we move that we connect with our, send a letter to our state representative and state senator showing our support of the Baker Initiative to put those, put those MS-IV permits in the hands of the state and specifically the DEP, rather than have the EPA from a federal standpoint administering that. It just makes sense that it's more local. And again, it's a model that's been used in many, many other states. So I, I would move that we send a letter to, asking for the, send a letter to our representatives, state representatives, and ask for their support of that Baker Initiative.
Is there a second, Mike?
I would second that.
Great. I'll make that unanimous, Rick.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Great idea. Mike, do you have any questions or anything for Rick?
I don't. By being my first meeting, I don't have anything for Mr. Valani.
Okay, that's okay.
Rick, actually, nor do I. So if there's nothing else, we can certainly move on to old business. The first agenda item, Rick, is the annual town meeting warrant?
Yes, what I've done, Mr. Chairman, is the warrant is there for the board. That was the warrant. That was approved by the board, I believe, at the last meeting or the meeting prior. Also included is a, you know, a sheet that lists the articles by department. I know we touched on them, I think, last meeting, or the meeting prior, actually. If there's anything the board would like to take up tonight, so be it. If not, again, I will have it on the succeeding agendas until town meeting, which is May twenty-second. So it's there for the board's consideration.
Bill, would you like to take any action tonight, or do we want to take it up in the next meeting going forward?
You know, I think it's worthwhile that we talk about each of the individual articles, especially those that are selectman articles. You know, I don't know, similar to what we've done in, in the past. We don't take up every article, but those that are certainly sponsored by us, it's worthwhile having discussion. And especially, you know, out of respect to Mr. Walsh, just to let him know where the history of this, these particular articles come from. And so, you know, what I'd propose, Rick, is that, you know, more than the warrant, maybe this year uniquely, we put together a small primer, and I'm talking about three or four sentences. Certainly not a novel. When we talk about what's it mean for salaries elected officials and boards, I want to avoid the, the topic or the phrase "housekeeping," but, you know, it's.
Recurring.
Recurring.
Recurring, maybe.
Oh, all right, I like that.
And the, and the difference, and the difference between this year and last year, maybe, if there's something unique to call out. And just to let Mr. Walsh know that, or Selectman Walsh, I should say, I'm sorry, that we've not yet had a discussion about the budgets under, under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. So we don't know the things that are being looked for, what level of justification they're at, and what level of review the town administrator and the finance director have given those prior to them getting to this point. So we've not gotten an update, and maybe that's something that, not, not maybe, we're going to need an update before we do this.
Sure. How far away, that's a great point. How far away are we from that? I imagine they're still, departments are still building their budgets now, or are they pretty much?
Pretty much budgets, the budgets are in. We're now doing, for example, I'm going to meet with the subcommittee tomorrow for some of the selectman budgets. So they are pretty much in.
Okay.
Okay, and there lies, there lies a challenge for us all in terms of communication, Rick. There's, there's that, Rob, that we're going to be going over, or I said, I should say more specifically, you're going to be going over budgets that the board has not seen with a subcommittee.
Right.
And I, I know we wanted to avoid that.
Okay.
And I know that was something we've talked about in the past as budgets go forward. I have a hard time defending anything. I've not been able to read, absorb, understand, look at rationale and justification. And so I have, I guess, no great concern that you're having a preliminary discussion with them. But if you could, please let them know that the Board of Selectmen has not had the opportunity to review or understand that. And if there's an executive overview of each of the budgets, I'd sure benefit from being able to.
We are putting together a binder for each of you that will show the budgets. We also do have what you talked about, so that you can see the overall effect from last year to this year on each individual budget, as far as increase, decrease, et cetera.
And, you know, it's been our position over the last few years that, you know, we're okay with the growth of budgets, but we want to make sure that it's fair. We want to make sure that it's planned, and we want to make sure that, you know, departments that have stood in line and waited for a very long time, that this isn't just, you know, a free-for-all for the, for the bucket of funds, but that it's, it's thoughtful and it's well-planned. And I think that would give, I know that would have given me in my first year, first week, first month, an opportunity to understand where our priorities are as well, because you see it built out, and it tells a story, right? Yeah, so do you know, do you know when that is going to be available, did you say? I'm sorry, I may have missed.
Yeah, I can get that available to you within a week or so, the actual budget, budgets. At least the drafts that are out there, yeah.
So what are we reviewing if there's drafts in place? Maybe I just need a better understanding. Drafts in place that have not gone through the full review of the finance director and yourself and this board, what are we reviewing with the FinCom?
The FinCom, I'm reviewing where we're at, basically this year's budget, to see where we're at in transfers, and any issues, anything coming forward. So part of it is this year, to see where I'm at with the last quarter.
Got you. Closing out FY seventeen.
What issues I might have, and there are a couple of issues with, with transfers that I know are going to arise, that I'm going to make them aware of. A couple of small ones, hopefully, that's it. And that's where we're at, pretty much. So a lot of that discussion will be, will be on this year's budget.
And so we're not going to be going over necessarily everything that we're looking for in, in next year's budget yet?
Not, not to that degree. What they probably, what they do want to see is the increases. In other words, if the budget's pretty much neutral, they're not, not, I won't say they're not concerned, but if the budget is pretty much where it was last year. Now, there may be some shifting of things. I have some of the budgets I've done. I've reorganized some expenses, for example, just looking at past, past two years' history. So we're going to be looking at that also.
All right, so still the caution remains that they're going to be looking at increases that this board is not aware of.
Understood, and that point will be made.
Yeah, and that should be pulled out as well, like any asks for increases in headcount, anything, all of that, which has been done before.
Yes, yes. That will be done.
And that's obviously all the stuff that we need to know every year anyway, prior to being able to support the budget itself. So, no, I appreciate, this is where this institutional knowledge comes in very handy, Bill, so I appreciate it. Mike, did you have any specific questions about this? So you're okay for putting this out, because obviously, after that explanation, it doesn't make sense to take them on yet until we, we know what they each are and what the overall budget is. Yep. No, absolutely. Yeah, you just left.
I know that one, yeah.
Okay. Bill, do you have any old business?
No old business, Mr. Chairman.
You may not have any old business unless it's pretty new, so. I, I do, Rick. I know that, was it the last meeting or two meetings ago, we were presented, Scott Christopher Lee was here with the Transportation Committee and presented a whole packet of information to us about ridership and things like that. I did get two calls. I got, I got only two, but they were constituents that were, had a lot of really good questions and good points about, you know, what actually those numbers represent. Are they unique riders? Are they riders who are getting on and off multiple times during the day? Did the information get generated from the fare box that is the piece of equipment on the bus? Or is this something that the driver is keeping account of? And I quite honestly couldn't answer those specific questions. So I'd like to know if we could even, again, get a, get a small summary from either the committee, or if you're, or if, quite honestly, if you're privy to it, get some type of explanation that, that way we can relay that to either the couple of constituents or to the public, just saying exactly what that breakdown is, what it represents. If we know, you know, unique people, number versus the overall. versus the overall, because again, you want to count the taps regardless of whether it's the same person four times or each individual. But just so we have that breakdown, because I think though it's, you know, this board has been very supportive of it and certainly, hopefully, we will be moving forward, we also want to know and make sure that we're all talking, you know, apples to apples and nothing else. So, and I do want to let the public know too, especially the folks that had called me, that I know it's, the MWRTA is coming this Wednesday to the Finance Committee. I saw that on their agenda. So if that is something where I know, I think, especially that being a different body, they're probably going to ask a lot of those types of questions. I imagine knowing the FinCom members as we do, they don't leave many stones unturned. So I think there'll be a lot of questions that probably generate those types of answers that I'm asking. So I wanted the public to know that as well because they may want to attend even the FinCom meeting or turn on Milford TV.
Okay.
My other issue with old businesses, and Mike, you probably know this trying to watch or even though being in the school, me trying to catch Selectmen meetings in your spare time, but I, when, and I certainly, my former colleagues, colleague did as well and Bill certainly does, when we get calls from neighbors about certain addresses or there being problems or rubbish or things like that, we usually bring them up and Rick finds whatever information is out there. Sometimes it's very small. He'll send, whether it's the, ask the Board of Health to be involved or the Building Commissioner's Office, and in pretty quick turnaround, he gets some information. I had asked about a property at 32 West Street, and I got more information than I ever thought I was going to, unfortunately, because of neighbors calling about police activity and conditions and things like that. And I didn't talk anything specific because I certainly didn't know, but, you know, you get one call, you get a couple, and all of a sudden, some neighbors around are doing that. We got, just at that address alone, there's been, since 2014 to just a couple of weeks ago, forty times that the police had to show up. So that, to me, seemed a lot. And what I said when I, in my opening remarks after you folks electing me was, maybe the property owner isn't even aware of that. So I think that if we can maybe come up with something, Rick, that, even the information you shared with me, because obviously it's public, if we can, you know, maybe even just, maybe you could draft something and that we could okay it, that maybe when something like this comes up, that maybe we're doing our duty by letting the property owner know, especially if they don't live in town, that this, you know, it's not just about sending John or Erica there and finding a violation according to the building code or the Health Board finding a violation of the state sanitary code, but it's also the neighbors that are surrounding this area that, you know, to me, forty times, it might be something, some problem there. I don't want to go into the specifics, but there's a lot of all different types of responses. So if we could maybe come up with something, Rick, I don't know if you think that's at least a decent idea, I just feel that maybe that's something important to notify the property owners because we can't certainly villainize or hold people responsible if they're not even knowing what's going on. Bill, I don't know if you have any comment to add to that or you think I'm crazy or anything else. It's just that that seemed like an awful lot of activity in one of our neighborhoods.
That's remarkable, and to think that in any one of our neighborhoods, we may have other properties or similar properties. You know, no neighbor should go through forty calls in three years. And I had an opportunity to glance over your shoulder at some of those calls. When we talk quality of life, that's certainly impacting the quality of life, not only of some of the other tenants within the building, because it's not all tenants, but also the neighbors and, you know, multiple, you know, neighbors all around that property. It's, it puts a tremendous strain and burden on our first responders, our police and fire. So not only do I think that it'd be appropriate that we notify that landlord, but I think that we ought to get guidance from Jerry on what our avenues are from here forward with that property. Because here's the worry I have, Mr. Chairman, that this property existed within the community and this board didn't know about it, other than to receive multiple complaints. And by the way, I've received complaints too. And so the question that begs, it begs is, how many other properties have a rap sheet, for lack of a better term, like this? I think we need to be aware long before it gets to this level. And I would ask for more detail for what I would call properties that have repeat instances of multiple police calls. I don't know that I can put a number on it, but this would exceed any reasonable person's number for notification to the board. And I know this is a new request. I just don't have any idea what kind, how many other properties are like this. Because that warrants an escalation, in my opinion. The number of calls that we're looking at there warrants an escalation, and Jerry could get us some guidance and Tom could probably get us some guidance on what the next steps are and find out how many other properties like this exist, because they shouldn't exist in any town.
I appreciate that. Mike?
I would be interested to see how fast the landlord responds to your notification, Rick.
Okay.
Because with, you know, that many calls, you can't tell me that the landlord doesn't know that the police departments go into his rental property quite that often. So I wouldn't be shocked to see that it's a very slow response. And, you know, I'm almost curious if we bring them forward to a board meeting or...
Well, we could certainly invite them. It probably doesn't have to come up short.
Yeah. But again, be very interested, to Mr. Buckley's point is, how many of those are there actually in the town that we don't know about? And, you know, maybe we can work with the chief to put together for us a, you know, report, pick a number, ten calls in a year or something, you know, just use as a guide and bring it to our attention so that we, as the Board of Selectmen, can look at it and, you know, it's the safety of our citizens and the safety of the town.
No, I really appreciate that, and I appreciate you two being more than supportive. I was actually intentionally trying to be less aggressive because I wasn't sure how to necessarily deal with this, but I think the three of us, if we don't come up with some way of at least bringing this into the light and dealing with it, then we all talk about improving our neighborhoods and things like that, but we're obviously not, we may not be doing it. And I don't want to talk about it and not follow through.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
And it certainly seems like you two don't either, so I appreciate that.
If that wasn't brought to light by what I would call a very innocuous, low-level, reasonable complaint, and you and I, it sounds like both received one, and through your inquiry, we're looking at that. Makes me wonder, makes me wonder how many are out there. So before we consider having a landlord come in, I'd like to know what my avenues are prior to meeting with that landlord, what the possible ins and outs of this process is. Because if that's not a nuisance property, I don't know what is. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting it.
Okay.
And again, I have to tell you, I asked for it and you've had it, information from Board of Health, the inspections Office and the Police Department. So again, Rick, very attentive, and I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is new business, Rick. This is for the renewal of secondhand and pool table licenses?
Yes, just the board needs to vote on both the secondhand and the renewal of pool table licenses. Usually one of you would read them, make a motion and approve the licenses.
Okay. Bill, do you just want to take, I mean, I think at some point, I remember, I think when you were chair, you just, you know, we did the renewal of all the secondhand licenses and seconded them and voted for them?
We did.
Yes.
Are you up for that again?
I am.
All right, great.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we renew the secondhand licenses for 2017 for Bosad Jewelry and Gifts, Central Street Resale. Mr., and I want to get this right, Mendez of Mendez Antiques, Nathan's Jewelers and TJ Collectibles. That's a motion?
I'll second that motion.
I'll vote in favor as well. That's unanimous?
Also like to recommend a motion favorable renewal of pool table licenses for 2017 at the Fun Zone of Milford LLC doing business as Pins, Hoboken Citizens Club, Taitran doing business as Lucky Nine.
I'll second that motion.
I'll also vote in favor, and that's unanimous?
The last one is renewal of a bowling alley license for Fun Zone, Milford LLC doing business as Pins.
Second that motion.
I'll make that unanimous as well. Thank you. Next is Louisa Lake asking for, I'm sorry, WMRC and MYFM asking for, I'm sorry, what's it called, off limits for a fishing derby that they'll be having April 22nd. This is from MYFM to our town administrator, Rick Vilani. Dear Richard, I'm writing to request consideration from the Board of Selectmen to proclaim Louisa Lake off limits for fishing for a period of just 24 hours preceding our annual free fishing derby for the kids on April 22nd. The Massachusetts Department of Fisheries and Wildlife will be delivering 500 trout at noon on Friday, the 21st. Over the past few years, the lake has been severely fished out prior to our event, and the number of fish caught seems to go down each year. As I mentioned, this derby is completely free for kids from the entire region. It's a great morning filled with families, donuts, milk and juice, t-shirts, trophies, prizes and more. I just want to ensure that we will have the fish. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to attend any meetings to discuss this further. Would also be possible at this time to get approval to hang our banner on the fence at Louisa Lake for the week leading up to the derby itself. Bob, up the sleeve is that, is there a motion for the off limits?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to proclaim Louisa Lake off limits and by virtue of the Board of Selectmen's permit process for signs, approve that sign that go up for the, I'm not sure, did he specify a period of time?
I'm not...
It would be down 72 hours after the event.
Yeah, I'm not so sure we can do that under our new signed bylaw, and I've talked with him and they're okay with it. They're going to make some other arrangements. He wants to put on the fence at Louisa Lake in our new bylaw.
The bylaw.
That's town property, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I have talked with him and they're going to, he's come up with some other alternatives.
All right, so let me modify that motion to move that the Board of Selectmen proclaim Louisa Lake off limits for a period of 24 hours preceding the fishing derby at the request of MYFM Media, WMRC, 1490 as well.
Second that motion.
I'll vote in favor as well, making that unanimous. Rick, I do have a question, though. How can we best enforce the fact that we don't want people fishing there the 24 hours prior to them getting there?
They'll put up some, we'll put up some signs there for that. And they've been very good. The public has been very good, I should say, after the last four years, knowing that this event is coming and the parks and we've been able to monitor that very well. So I don't envision a problem.
Can we also contact the Police Department just to see if that night before, we can just have an additional, well, not additional, but whoever's covering that sector, just pulling the parking lot once in a while, just to show we're taking it seriously?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Rick, is the possible purchase, well, the purchase of the Purchase Street School Possible Disposition. I know this came up because it's currently under lease to preschool, but we also wanted to know, and Bill, I think you may have generated this request, I believe, just to know what our rights are of the lease we're under and possibly what it would take if we decided to, continuing the lease into the future, obviously after its final term or putting it up for sale? Was that the request or...
Yes, I think what you have in front of you is a memorandum from Town Council that was generated several months, a few months ago, outlining basically a little bit of history about the property itself, the lease terms, I believe a copy of the lease. It is under lease until, I want to say, 2020 January 31st. The lease was issued pursuant to an RFP, Request for Proposals. The lease does put some maintenance responsibilities on the tenant. It's a dollar limit. I believe it's up to a value of 2,000. We did have some work, for example, done two weeks ago on the roof that was under that, and the tenant took care of that responsibility. The board going forward would, I guess, need to consider, obviously, depending on what the board does in the next couple of years, we will not issue a new lease other than coming back to the board for us to see what this board wants to do regarding the property. I would have to have a conversation with the Town Council to determine, could we sell now? My understanding, it would still be subject to the lease. We do have a lease agreement.
Be binding on a new one.
I think it would be, so that may inhibit or make the sale not as likely. I don't know, I don't think anybody can speculate on that, but that's my estimate. So again, I was asked to bring this forward.
Rick, actually, I'll turn it over to you, Bill. Obviously, you were, but, yeah, go ahead.
The origin of this, Mr. Chairman, was that a couple of years ago, the FinCom had asked if we wanted to be in this business, why we wanted to be in this business, if it made fiscal sense, given the cost of some of the repairs. You know, there was a long period of time, until Rick caught it, that it wasn't on our capital improvement plan. So we were either relying on the tenant or not giving, not giving the FinCom the appropriate planning notification that we should have. And when Rick caught that, he brought that up, he rectified that because I think it needed a boiler at the time or heating system.
That's correct, yes.
So the question is one of the FinCom, which is a reasonable one, what does the Board of Selectmen want to do with that property? And, you know, is there lease sell, financial analysis that we could do where it just makes sense, whatever we want to convey to them makes sense, and we provide some rationale? Because, you know, for a lot of people, the thinking is that the municipality shouldn't be in the landlord business. It generally, generally doesn't make sense, but there may be unique qualifiers to that. And so I think what the board has to do is think about how it wants to approach this property. It was, it's not extremely old or historical from my perspective, built in 1964, but at the same time, there may be compelling reasons and arguments where we want to keep it. I'm not of that mindset right now, but I certainly could be convinced. Now, given that, what I think the board might want to look at is, what's the next three to five-year plan for this in terms of capital and expenditure? How much do we think we'd have to put into this? And is it something we want to do over the long haul? That's really what the FinCom is looking for. So if we get a little bit of an outlook of, we see what the revenue is being taken in, and it's revenue in lieu of taxes, if I understand it correctly, is that right, Rick?
It is.
It has exceeded those taxes by a couple of thousand dollars each year?
Correct, yes, yeah.
So it's not a spreadsheet winner, let me say it that way?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the sheet there, maybe six grand on average, I'm looking at it real quick, some years, not nearly that.
Yeah, and if the same square footage were taken up by any other property owner, it would be paying the taxes.
It might be a different lease setup, correct.
And maybe not even a lease, right? Maybe an outright sale. So something the board has to think about.
Yep.
But we should know the answers, and what the FinCom is just simply asking this board is, what do you want to do with this property?
Yeah.
And so we never took it up. I remember promising the FinCom that we would take up this property and never came back to it. So, you know, my apologies, you know, I sat the last year's chair and frankly forgot about it. So we need to come back to it. We owe the FinCom an answer because it's a reasonable question. And if our policy, from a matter of policy and strategy, is we want to keep it, okay? If we want to sell it, okay. If we want to continue leasing it, okay. But we have to come to some consensus before any one of us. And you keep getting put on the spot and asked about what we're doing with the property, we should form a consensus and help give you that direction.
Okay.
So I think there's some analysis that needs to be done. What's the three to five-year outlook for capital outlay? I don't know, if Zach has any thoughts about that may keep or sell breakpoint? Because I don't know what the indirect overhead is. There's a cost every time we send a building inspector or anybody else to it, tradespeople, whatever. There's a cost over and above just fixing the roof or fixing the boilers or doing that. It's a resource, and I don't know how much resource is going into it. So maybe Zach has some understanding of the total obligation of the community. That's all I have.
Mike?
I'd just add to Bill's, what is the value of the property?
I believe the assessed value... I believe the assessed value is above $500,000, or 519 and change, if I'm not mistaken. No, that's the assessed value.
Yeah, we need an independent appraisal to answer Mike's question, and a great question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, there's just not enough information in, in this documentation that we have here that I, you know, that I could make a form, informed decision. So, you know, if you could please get, you know, back to us with that information that we've requested, and what the real value of the property is, 'cause that could make a big difference.
Yeah.
And, and maybe even have a conversation with the owner, I mean, the operator of the, I guess it's a daycare. What, what's their long-range plan? Are they, are they themselves looking at another piece of property? Are they looking to close? Are they looking to continue there? That's important, too. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think also a conversation with the, with the, with the, with Alex, who leases it. It's very important, because she's not watching this tonight, or some parents that go there, and it is a very successful daycare center. She actually does a fantastic job. What we don't want is people speculating or thinking, oh, God, you know, this is, that something's gonna change tonight or tomorrow. Even though we've made that abundantly clear, we know how things get, get lost in translation when people are just talking and, and trying to inform each other on a, on a soundbite. So, I think letting her know, I mean, she's obviously in the middle of a lease. I drive by there every morning on the way to work, and I see, there's, the parking lot's full, parents are running in and out. And knowing her personally, she's a, she's a, she's a good person, who does a really good job. And my only question was even finding out that if we did decide to sell it, 'cause quite honestly, I'm not sure I wanna be in the landlord business, Bill. And I think that's a, that was one of the points that you made that stung, that stuck out to me. But, again, would she, would, because we're a public entity, does it make it more difficult? Could she be the first right of refusal? You know, I wanna make sure, too, that, you know, she, as far as I'm concerned, they, they've been the tenant there now, and, and a good tenant.
Yeah, and you bring up a good point. We're talking about a business that, you know, Board of Selectmen shouldn't be in the business of putting people out of business. We also shouldn't be in the subsidy business. But, that said, it would be my desire not to necessarily move on it until that lease is up. But, we still have to plan for that now, and understand whatever the favor of this board is, how we wanna go forward. Because it's going to make, it's going to have an impact on what our capital plans are, and what we do over the next three to five years. Same thing as you might if you're, if you're selling a car, right?
Yeah.
Do I make this investment in the car, or do I trade, sell, whatever? So, we should understand that. We should be able to communicate back to the FinCom. And I, and I say that without making a motion, because I don't wanna make a motion tonight. I don't wanna put members of the board in that spotlight, but I'm just letting people know what I'm thinking about in terms of, when you talk about the daycare, and what a spot they could be put into. We have a three-year lease. I'd like to honor that, but let's talk about that, because there may be ways to honor it moving forward and still move on the property.
No, and I appreciate what you said about the next three to five years, 'cause, I mean, obviously, one of our larger assets, and we've heard, it wasn't a topic of discussion every year for the FinCom and on the capital improvement plan. So, that alone, you kinda had me at that. And, no, I think this is, this is a good opportunity to move forward, and, and for all of us to get educated and plan the next steps. All right, great. Rick, you're clear on direction, everything like that?
I think so, yes.
All right. Well, that's everything under new business. And then, for correspondence, we have the Annual License Establishment Activity Report. Mike, I'm sure you know as well, this is something that I believe the chief issues to us quarterly, and he continuously adds to it. So, you'll see these, since this goes from January 1 to March 31st, these will stay on as he adds from, obviously, April going forward for the next, for the next quarter. We generally go through them. If there's anything, at least the short time that I've been on the board, if something jumps out and we wanna talk about, we do, for the most part. Some of them, you know, aren't a big surprise. A thing that has been disappointing over the last couple of years that I've been on, anyway, is seeing the medical emergencies and the number of drug activity at our, at our non-alcohol establishments. It's at the donut shops and hamburger joints and things like that, and, you know, but that just kinda, just reinforces, unfortunately, what's happening all around us and everywhere. So, Bill, is there anything that you wanna, you wanna talk about specifically?
No, and I know it's hard for Mike to have perspective on this. I, I just wanna say that over the course of the last four or five years that I've been looking at reports like this, this is actually the least concerning of them all. And I say that with the caution that any time that we dispatch a police officer to suspicious activity where there could be drug activity, we put an officer at risk. So, I, I do it with a lot of caution when I say that, but this is the least amount of activity I've seen in a, in a quarter, I think, in a long time. And part of it, it's important to note that part of it is a result of the agreement that the, these establishments have with our police department to, if they see something, call it in quick. It's not gonna reflect on them if they're calling in a disturbance in their parking lot, unless they're contributing to the problem. They're calling it in early before it becomes something that escalates. No, nothing concerning to me, Mr. Chairman. I know I gave you a long-winded answer.
No, no, I appreciate it. Mike, is there anything you'd like to talk about, or?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, great. Well, if there's nothing else that ends all of our agenda items, Rick, is there anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's tonight's agenda.
Bill, Mike, anything that we, they have overlooked?
No, nice job, nice job.
All right, thank you. Well, we do have an executive session regarding the ongoing negotiations with the water company. So, I'd take a, a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, to go into executive session.
Second?
I'll make that, I'll also vote in favor, make that unanimous, if we can do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as well. Have a good night, and thank you.